After six and it sounds like we do have a quorum, so why don't we go ahead and get started? Let's call the Johnson City Council work session number twenty dash thirteen to order. Cindy, roll call, please.
Council member Evans?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Here.
Code.
Let me start by reading the COVID nineteen statement due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. And in accordance with Governor Reynolds' March nineteen twenty twenty proclamation, suspending the regulatory provisions via code section twenty one point eight or any other statute imposing a requirement to hold a public meeting or hearing, the city of Johnson will conduct meetings electronically with the public allowed to attend per instructions denoted on the meeting's particular agenda. Meeting minutes will continue to be posted per the city's normal course of business. So we will now move on to our discussion items. The first one is the Ignite project update. And Adam, do I turn that over to you?
Yes, and I believe we have probably Chad and Brian Omira also on as attendees and probably want to chime in here at some point. But I'll start things off. So we've been working for the past several months here throughout the due diligence period on the three properties that are seeking to be brought under control to work through the site planning and a lot of the other infrastructure issues related to this this project. COVID nineteen has slowed down a couple of aspects on that, in particular, the traffic study. That's difficult to undertake with different traffic patterns that we have during the pandemic here. And then we've been working through some of the wetlands and overall grading issues. But we are nearing completion on the development agreement and the utilization agreement. We had hoped last week to secure a slight extension on that due diligence period as we tried to work through a couple of these remaining issues, but we were unable to do so. So you will see on the city council meeting agenda this evening, a number of public hearings that are being set for July twenty seventh. And just a quick outline of those, we'll be setting a public hearing for the financing of the public portion of this project. We'll be setting a public hearing for the urban renewal plan update for the central Tiff district, which gives us some spending authority and better delineates what this project is under the urban renewal plan. And then we'll be setting the public hearing for the actual development agreement itself. So we are still working through that use agreements and that development agreement. We're hoping to have that just about finished up here in the next week or week and a half. Take it back committee for some comments at that point. But we did have a committee meeting this morning as well and walked through a number of these items. So the overall structure of the development agreements largely in the same shape as the term sheet was, where the city's providing grant assistance for the above market value acquisition of the two properties that ignite will be purchasing and helping with getting the site development ready. So out of the floodplain, demolish the buildings and the structures that are already there. There's not many wetlands within the ignite project area, but there is one small section of potentially some assistance for wetlands remediation. And then on the back half of that, there's also a corresponding ten year seventy five percent Tiff rebate, of which a number of city infrastructure items will be deducted out of that actual rebate. So that would be the public road, the stormwater detention ponds and the public parking lot that would be constructed there. And then the final component of that is a utilization agreement, which commits the city to a five year term of use of the ignite facility for park and recreations programming. And that is a ten percent use of that overall space with the specifics of how that's being used and what components being used, really being driven by the city and what our future programming components look like going forward. So a quick update, kind of going through some main components that we've been working through. The wetlands delineation study, which is one of the attachments, I believe, on this file, if you wanted to pull that open, but I'll just kind of give you a verbal description of it. It did come back fairly positive. We had some concerns that there was going to be significant wetlands in the poly eyes property, but the updated delineation does not show any there. There is a significant wetlands area on the very northern end of the city property underneath the power lines. And that's where our detention basin is scheduled to be. So we've been working through some resizing of that detention basin. We explored a couple of alternative locations where that detention basin might go to avoid the wetlands. Those really didn't create a favorable result. So at this point, we're really looking to try to minimize the impact by reducing the size and potentially looking at a secondary detention basin on the urban Dale property. But we don't have specific site plan updates for what that might look like yet. The overall site, much of it currently in the floodplain. The buildings will be located in the far east of the site, kind of where the existing imperial storage facilities are to minimize the risk of flooding. It will be significant grade imports to raise that out of the floodplain. A portion of the city park and the portion of the ignite property will remain in that floodplain, but those will be previous surfaces under that part. And then there is planned on the ignite site for a turf field with lighting and some other investment into that. And we're currently expecting that to be brought above the floodplain as well. Overall, within the floodway, there's no proposed increase of grade there. So there shouldn't be any impact on the actual floodway, although there may be some leveling of the surfaces for use soccer field and the cricket field that are currently situated within that floodway. The dirt import costs have driven a number of costs up on this project. The term sheet anticipated a city grant of up to a million dollars to assist with that grading and that dirt import because that detention basin can't be dug as deep as we were hoping due to basically the water that's going to be filling that up as soon as you get below that water line. And because of the increased need to protect, in particular, that turf field that ignites proposing, which requires some additional grading and infill, and then trying to avoid creating detention or creating walls between the adjacent properties, a number of which particularly on the east side of the site are significantly higher grade than we're posing or were posed under the original term sheet grading concept, which really brought everything about two feet out of that floodplain. So the current cost projections under this are about three million dollars. We're hoping that that still might be brought down somewhat through some creative site planning through some local imports for dirt that we believe will be available. But we are rethinking how that's going to be structured. Likely the city will be proposed to commit sixty six percent assistance on all those import costs with a cap of two million dollars. So that'll kind of keep ignite and the city on the same page of trying to minimize what those fill costs are going to be, but also continue to share on kind of that two million dollar increase that we were kind of expecting to see at this point. So we do continue to expect some site plan work to occur and some change in that grading. But that's kind of what we're steering towards right now is changing that cap up to two million, but leaving that at a sixty six percent of the total documented costs allocation to try to try to encourage that to be as minimal as possible. The third item here is the Johnston Drive Extension, the DOT rise grant. We did get some information back last week from both. Our initial infrastructure estimate really looked at the extension of the Johnston Drive. And as we start to look at the traffic impacts and the traffic volume that this project's going to create in addition to any additional echo developments that would happen down the road. Both was really seeing a need to rebuild that entire the entire intersection at Merle Hay and Johnston. So what we have right now is a very preliminary figure. These costs could go down. They're not expecting them to go up because they've really thrown everything in there as far as the amount of turn lanes that they've included. And when they finish their traffic study work, that could lower the the number of turn lanes that are needed in the overall price. But we are looking at about a two point nine million dollar cost from what was estimated, again, at about one million dollars previously. We have talked to the DOT and received some good news from them that the project will likely be eligible for fifty percent rise grants. So that could potentially fund half of that two point nine million. But we won't have final knowledge of whether that rise grant would be received up until the end of this year or early next year. Matt Griner's also looked at the potential for continuing those road improvements further south towards the interstate, knowing that there are some longer term plans to do improvements on Merle Hay Road. Boy, tearing up this section again when you reach that point of wanting to do those improvements. So that's not included in that two point nine figure, but it's something that's being at least explored right now in our end. The fourth item is the the CAT grant. We also had a conversation with the CAT grant administrator. That would be a more in-depth process than the rise grant as far as the getting public fundraising involved in that and involvement with the community. It would be eligible for the public improvements components of this project. So the city park, the detention pond, the road and the parking lot. But our current thinking is that there might be an opportunity if those future park, the city park improvements were a little bit more enhanced than kind of a basic grading with with grass on there down the road, that that might be a good opportunity a year or two down the road when those plans become a little bit more clear. So we've kind of put a feather on that one right now. Put a hold on that one right now, but we have explored that at least some degree to know what what might be available in the future there. The fifth item is the Urban Dale land lease. We have executed that lease between the city of Urban Dale and Johnston. That lease allows with the consent of the city of Urban Dale to sublease that. Going through kind of the financial conversations of trying to finance this project, which is a pretty complex equation. Financial institutions would really prefer that there's a direct lease from Urban Dale to ignite for the portion of the land that they would be using, which is really that northern bit there that is included on the very western part of their sports field, the turf field. We had some discussions with the Urban Dale staff about a week and a half ago. They seemed receptive to bringing data idea to the elected officials as well as potential discussion of actual sale of the property or a portion of the property. Ignite does sort of have a contingency plan or is able to work within the existing lease, but we would like to try to give them as much certainty as possible, given the amount of investment that would be taking place on that turf field to try to ensure that they're going to be able to take advantage of of that investment and maintain that throughout the course of the project. We've also been meeting with Childserves executive team to discuss what their willingness is to share their parking space, particularly during off peak hours of the evenings and the weekends in which we anticipate having the most traffic flowing through here for kind of the tournaments that would be held by ignite. They've been very supportive of the project to date, so we're not seeing any roadblocks on that front at all. We continue to kind of discuss the potential for some child serve utilization of the ignite facility. And in our use agreement, so we do have drafted in there to ensure that there's some ADA accessible equipment in there as well to make sure there's some good usability for any participants that would be coming from Childserves there. So overall cost implications, as I said, we're still really working through some of this traffic and the grading items as it stands today, but there are definitely those costs increase that are being driven primarily by the road and by the increased fill. So we're expecting to see an increase from that initial eight point nine million dollar estimate outlined in the term sheet by two to three and a half million, three point seven million. We don't know those defined costs until we've really worked through what that final traffic study is or until we receive the rise grant or even after the project would be underway when we really get a clear understanding of what that fill cost would be. But we're going to continue to try to narrow that down and define that in that development agreement that we're hoping to have finished here in the next week and week and a half. Kind of close up here with the utilization agreements. That agreement's also still being drafted here. It does mirror kind of what's laid out in that term sheet. City staff at ignite have sat down a couple of times and talked through what the city's utilization of that facility looks like, the type of events, the type of staff utilization that we might need from ignite to run those and what other special activities that might take place there. So that really does, it hasn't really changed much from what we've talked about in the term sheet. There is a rate chart that'll be produced likely annually of what a use of any ignite staff would cost, and that would be deducted from the overall utilization agreement for the space of that ten percent space utilization that the city would have. And we try to define sort of on a semi annual basis what the city's programming looks like within the ignite facility and reserve and dedicate that space so that the city programming can be carried out. So the duration of that lease right now is expected to be five years. There is built in there the option to extend that for additional five year periods at a rate of inflation increase. And we'll share further details as soon as we've got that use agreement more laid out. So that's kind of what's been happening here for the last couple of months. We're really racing to the finish line here, but I'm going to open it up to Chad and Brian to see if they have any additional comments or if city council or the mayor have any questions.
Hey, Adam, this is Chad. You know, just the review is it was a comprehensive review. I might just touch base on a couple of the pieces kind of from the ignite side. Yeah, obviously there's some work to be done in the development agreement that everybody's working very diligently on that. The maybe a little just a little bit more because the, you know, the big concerns that results of the dirt grading. We've, I think in the spirit of this project, always said, let's let's share in the goods and upside. Let's also share in some of the pain and the dirt. We learned a lot as the technical groups did the elevation studies. And and really what I think kind of changed philosophically is, you know, tying into the northeast lands, just such as child serve. And then the way that Johnson Drive came into the property as well. And it just became to the point where if you're going to develop a project in the hope to invite, you know, hundreds of thousands of people on a annualized basis, that you don't want it to be overly quirky and and maybe impact customer experience coming into the project. And and so really the the technical teams took over and and kind of said, really, here is more, you know, they like on the Johnson Drive, you said the slope on that was extreme, a higher slope than they've seen on any type of street like that. And, you know, they they just saw some problems. And so I think that that I just want to give people more context on the on why some of the elevation studies have been exacerbated, but with a project of this scope, it's, you know, we've always said, you gotta kind of contemplate, how do you do it right? So it's a good experience for constituents to use it. So I think that, you know, that philosophy and then to Adam's point, including the rise grant and things we've been working mutually on what how to mitigate some of this cost. And we're continuing to do that with some of the site planning. You know, and and, you know, even terracing within the ignite project to say, okay, how do we how do we offset some of that? But I just wanted to give a little bit more detail on the dirt and grading. And then, no, I think everything else was covered. I mean, I think that, you know, we did do quite a bit of work now with city and and dual education and park and rec and have rationalized, you know, at some point is well, is ten percent a good starting number for the utilization agreement, a ten percent of the ability, you know, the hours and capacity and what the and I think that as we did more and more detailed work and rationalize that fact that ten, you know, it was it was rational pretty well. And and so I just think that there's been more additional work. And then our commitment to just continue to to work the project to, you know, to fruition here. We all know this is a challenging time against the the Zoom call. Who knew we'd be all become such experts on Zoom? But I will tell you that we mentioned this a little bit earlier in a working session that things are finally starting to come back to life here at ignite. We hosted our first mini events two weeks ago. We had clubs that traveled with nearly a hundred people from Minneapolis and in in the Grinnell area and, you know, people come and stay in hotels, eat. And and it looks like our pipeline for the fall and winter. I think this is 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 the most bullish we've seen it. And so we, you know, all this kind of keep our fingers crossed that the great leadership that we've had so far in the state and everybody stays healthy as possible, that, you know, things continue to open up. But I think that encourages us to continue to pluck through even difficult times to say, look, we've come this far and let's see our way through this project. But otherwise, Adam, you know, and I'll turn it over to Brian. Do you have anything else to add to that? You know, the comprehensive list of the of the eight or nine things you went in just a few embellishments on my part and maybe how he arrived at, you know, some of the elevation. I thought that was maybe an addition that you might have. Other than that, if anybody has any comments or questions, be happy to, you know, discuss those as well.
Does anyone have any questions for Adam or for the ignite team?
This is Tom. I don't have any questions. And this, I realize obviously this is a very complex project and a lot, lot of moving parts, but I I hear from a lot of folks across the community that are very excited about this project, all of all of the opportunity it provides our community. And so really, I mean, it's we've got issues we've got to work through, but to me, they're not major issues. They're sort of procedural type things that I think we can definitely work through and and get accomplished. And I think I know if it's Chad or or Brian this morning kind of indicated maybe a timeline of hopefully, you know, late twenty twenty one, early twenty twenty two for being doors open, which I don't want to put too much heat on you, but that would be that'd be certainly, that'd be great, so.
And Tom, I guess Chad and Brian both said that, you know, from a business standpoint, the sooner the better as well. Or you know how it goes, our contractors, everything is set into twenty twenty one is is kind of the soonest. And then it all depends a little bit on the seasonality and the upcoming weather and things like that. Yeah, our hope would be that timeframe would be a good timeframe.
Right, that's outstanding.
You know, Tom, I I would also reiterate too that that it is a bit difficult and there is a lot of procedural things here, but when you step back and you even look at where the increases have come with the the fill and and with the project on on Johnston Drive there, those are things that are really going to enhance that entire area, not just the ignite project. And I think the possibility of some things like the rise grant and some of that make them more doable. And it'll be something that really book adds that end of your development for years and years to come. We're really excited for the project.
You know, I think I think, you know, when we do something in Johnston, we want to make sure it's done first, first rate, first class, and adding that extra fill will help alleviate potential flooding concerns, which, you know, I think we certainly want to be proactive in in addressing. And so to me, that's sort of a cost that it's it's what I would classify as a wise investment. So and not only on your part, but your on the city's part too.
You know, and it's definitely indoor and outdoor project as well, too, Tom. And so
Right, right.
outdoor amenities, what they really, kind of your point at the level that we all want them. That's, you know, so I totally, total agreement that then yes, for the long term experiential piece, which is good for the business and hopefully good for everybody in the city, that it's kind of worth doing this the right way.
So under the current timeline, and not to put any more pressure on you than you already have, when can we expect to have a groundbreaking?
Well, I mean, here, let me just, why am I going to plan a groundbreaking? If I'm going to maybe just laying out the calendar a little bit, you know, to Adam's point, we've got twenty five days to to subside the diligence period on this project. And even though we tried to stretch that kind of to Tom's point, I think we all think it's doable and we appreciate everybody's help on on your end and making that possible as well. And then we'll go into a thirty day closing period. And then, you know, conceivably, the end of August is when ignite would would have control over the major portions of the of the land. And then we go into the next phase of, you know, contemplating along with some of the some of the city improvements, you know, like demolition and some of those things. So I would think maybe shortly after August, you know, into maybe September or something. Would Adam help us figure all of it out? But yeah, I I don't see why at one point, once we get control of the land and start some of the adjacent projects that we we couldn't, you know, we could, we could do a simplistic groundbreaking. You know, if you think about the pre because of the nature of the elevations and stuff, then after the two months to get through the administrative and the closing, there's going to be roughly called six months of pre development activity to get the land, you know, to demolish some of the properties that are there, get the land up to the right elevation, get some infrastructure in place. And then the vertical build would start, you know, so that that's like six to eight months down the lines with the vertical build. So I think it's it's when when we support either right after the kind of closing and the earnest kind of pre development stuff happens or, you know, that's where I'll lean on Adam a little bit on what his his thoughts are in this in those windows. But I think after August, we kind of control our destiny when we want to do some of that kind of stuff.
Great. Fall groundbreaking's are wonderful.
That's beautiful. It would be for us as well.
Any other questions for Adam or or for our ignite team?
Yeah, this is Ray. I have a quick question. Adam, thank you for making this happen. Everybody who made this happen, it's really wonderful for the city of Johnston. I hope it succeeds well. All the one question remains, I need to ask, will the current situation, coronavirus, the COVID nineteen delay the project in any way?
Well, I I think that, you know, sure, it's a great question. Here's the way that we've been even answering it, even with our finance partners and everybody that's we've been talking to, is that let's let's all kind of keep our fingers crossed. I think we've had great leadership in the state. We've really started to see our business come back to life kind of one step at a time over the last month. We're going into the fall and winter with the most robust business pipeline we've had for events and our club teams. And I think that that's a little bit of a sign of some pent up demand. And so, you know, I think we're fighting, we're all fighting through the administrative side, not to let this thing slow down because of the COVID, we've had some delays, but, you know, working together kind of to add to his point, we can overcome it. So I, you know, I think I don't know if it's if praying's appropriate or what and the hoping is appropriate that that we don't see any type of dramatic resurface that that maybe pushes things from the planning off, but it really shouldn't at this point. I I think that we're starting to control the destiny in the phase of it to own the land. But from what we see right now, we're actually very bullish even on this fall and winter. So I that's my long version of just kind of giving context of that's why we see people from other states traveling to the void now for even events last weekend. And and we're hopeful there, you know, we've seen the worst of any of the administrative employees or, you know, things coming out of that. And I guess, you know, Adam or Brian, if you have any other comments on that. You know, I I think that if there's anything dramatically severe and it is disruptive, you know, in the in the whole proceedings, then the country has a bigger problem than the ignite project going through. So that's my short answer, saying let's all hope that we've seen the worst of it and we're not going to see dramatic spike again or something disrupt. And then I think we put contingencies that work through it as well as possible to to continue to make the thing happen, so.
And I I would follow up on that, this is Brian, by saying that even, you know, the experts have have missed a lot of a lot of things during the COVID pandemic. But even looking at some of their projections, even if there was to be a spike this fall, you know, most of them are now saying that that a lot of the the really bad cases are probably behind us. And if you look at hospitalization results and things like that, you're seeing some of that. And so even if there was a little bit of of a spike this fall that caused some delays and some things, where we would be at in our process, really, I don't think that affects any of it. And then this this product, this project's probably fairly well timed, given the cause of everything would really be completed at the right time. So I think as well as we could have come through this, it's poised to be really successful, hit the ground running when we open the doors.
Well, very good. Thanks for the answers. I I really think we should, well, I hope that COVID does not delay anything. Just had to ask that question to make sure we have that plan with your planning. So thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Yeah, from a practical standpoint, I think the closing is going to happen at the end of August every month. Yeah. From a practical standpoint, I think the closing is going to happen at the end of August every month. So that would then mean that we can control it and, and if there are some tiny delays in the construction or something, that's unforeseen, but I think we should be able to handle it.
Any other questions? Adam, do you have some final words?
Do not.
Okay. Well, thank you, gentlemen, for, um, meeting with us this morning at seven o'clock and this evening at six o'clock. So.
Thank you guys very much. It's your privilege. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the next discussion item, and that is a discussion of the July 1, 2020 water and sewer utility rates. Teresa, is that you?
Yes, it is. I'll unmute myself there. Um, and also I think Matt Stufel is on, um, the line. I hope, okay, he's there. So, um, one, one correction, I guess, um, to refer to the, uh, items that were sent out to you. I sent out to you, Matt's water fund cash flow and sewer fund cash flow. And, um, Cindy, you must have control of the stuff, I believe. Could you just open the water one? So if you remember right, at the top of this, um, each of these cash flows that Matt does for us for each utility, um, up in the left-hand corner is where he talks about the assumptions he makes when he, um, does a cash flow. And then on the right-hand, um, corner, he has, um, put in past rate adjustments, um, the July 1 of 19 and July 1 of 20, water rate adjustments are in kind of a different color, with blue ink. Those are already set by ordinance. Um, you have ordinance in place. Those were adjusted. Uh, one was adjusted 5% last year and it's going to be adjusted again 5% this year. And then what Matt's just projecting out in all the next future, um, six, six years, um, based on the information and the assumptions he has used has been, is just a small 1% increase. And, uh, I'll let Matt get into some further detail regarding, um, either he or Jim about Des Moines Water Works and, and what they are talking about and what the regional water discussions are, are like and all of that type of thing. But um, on the first page then, if you, you'll look, he typically uses a 6,000 gallon, um, average monthly bill for our customers. And so on about line seven, uh, you'll see what the average monthly, uh, bill is for a customer, a water customer in Johnston. And Tom Cope had asked earlier today, Cindy doesn't need to pull it up, but we do have it if you have questions. Um, some water rate information and sewer rate information. Matt Stofel had that available as well. And that was forwarded to you, um, for a whole bunch of communities in Iowa. And, um, there are just so many factors that go into all of the different water rates in the, um, and if they have their own water plant or if they're buying water, if they're purchased capacity city versus a non-purchased capacity city of Des Moines Water Works. So there's a lot of factors that are out there. Um, the bottom line is if, uh, individual might look at a Johnston water bill and feel ours is, um, is slightly high compared to some of our other cities. I think Waki Grimes closest to us, they, uh, they are higher. But that is why I asked for, um, Des Moines Water Works rate and what we're paying Des Moines Water Works, um, is substantially higher than other cities and where they're, um, what they're paying for water. But I digress. Needless to say, in the water utility itself, um, if you go on to the next page, Cindy, and maybe even the next page, and then I guess Matt, I'll let you jump in when you want. But here's where the debt is for our water utility. And if you'll notice, um, in, um, last fiscal year, we had, uh, our large debt, our 2011 A is the one that we paid off and refunded. So line 56, we had, uh, a big chunk of debt fall off. And that's what's, um, helping our, helping our cash now, or helping our, our water utility. Now, the, the questions that, that are not answered on the next page have to deal with, um, if you go down another page, Cindy, sorry. Um, these are our CIP projects and, um, or excuse me, this is the cash flow after debt. And, um, you'll see where, uh, what our cash balance is after our O and M. And then there's also our, um, what's the word, Matt?
Restricted or designated fund?
Yes, thank you. And what that has to be. So that's on this page. But if you go to the next page, which ha, which happens to be then our CIP projects, we don't have anything in here yet for any infrastructure to the north of Johnston, whether that be whatever that may be. If we do so ourselves, if we partner with someone, if, you know, whatever that is, that's what those blue bars and those buffed out color bars, annexation A, annexation B, all of those, we've, we've wiped those out. So what Matt has given us in both the sewer and the water are what are, what is our base case. So that just means right now, this is what it takes for the current customers we have with the, uh, variable rate or growth that he's anticipated we're going to have and what we need to do to keep our utilities in, in sound, but, um, sound condition. Um, the sewer one, uh, one small correction on this sewer one. If you looked at the sewer revenue adjustments for July 1st of 20, that's going to, that says point 1.6%. That's really zero. Um, we were, um, having a debate. Long story short, the ordinance that we passed last year that adjusted the sewer rate 5%, um, we don't have a current ordinance on the books that adjusts the sewer rate July 1st of 2020, any amount. So at this point, there's no sewer increase unless after Matt explains everything or we talk about things, you decide that we want to have an increase. But as far as our sewer rates go, um, we asked him to do the same thing because we didn't have back from engineer what the costs were per segment if we, whenever we put in infrastructure to the north. We got that late today. Uh, I was just able to forward that to Matt today. But one of the things, um, that he even explained to me is regardless of when we start doing those projects, at the time that we start doing them, our finance advisor is going to come back to this council at that point and say, okay, now we know a cost this much. Do you want to create a connection fee for the district? Do you want a separate rate for these new customers? Do you want to just pay interest for the first few years of the loan so that we get connection fees in so then we can start paying the debt through the connection fees? I mean, there are going to be all these different options we can talk about that we didn't want to just assume we knew what you would want to do in two years, three years, four years. We have no idea. So we just took it out and I'm, and we're just doing the base case. That's what I, I guess I'm trying to say. And so with the sewer and the cash flow, um, Matt has suggested like three and a half for, um, four years, then maybe a 3%. One of the discussions we did have for sure is that we know the water rate ordinance is, covers us through this year. We have no sewer rate increase for this year and that come February of next year, which is when the WRA finishes their budget because it's the flow that really drives what our sewer rate does. That's why when we need any sort of increase in sewer right now is because of our WRA flow. Um, that when Matt gets those numbers, maybe we should come back and we should just for a couple of years do one-year rate increases or, or one or two at the most while we're worrying about how we're building in that infrastructure and annexation versus really guessing what we're going to do for the next four years. It's really hard right now when we have all these projects we're talking about doing, but we don't know when and, and there's just so many variables that are not answered. So Matt, uh, I'm going to turn the microphone over to you so you can add to what I've said and then we can ask the council for questions.
Yeah, thanks Teresa. Um, you know, from the water perspective, like Teresa said, you've got that big debt that's paying off. Um, I'm assuming Des Moines Water Works has increased their rates at 5% per year from pretty much the, the life of the cash flow. Um, everything that I can see being discussed at Des Moines Water Works and on the regional front probably would take some pressure off of your, off of your rates. Um, you guys are paying the with storage rate on every gallon that you purchase now. So I really think that this is a, a pretty conservative approach. The other thing I, that we look at is we try to do like a three, 75% of the three-year average for irrigation so that we're not anticipating a big irrigation year. So for, for like fiscal 2021, if it is a, a really dry year and you do have a lot of irrigation sales, it takes a lot, it, it takes pressure off of, um, what your rates need to be. And so, um, so from a water perspective, there's just not a lot of pressure, um, on the rates, um, kind of given where we're at. But you know, in the past, we've done these four-year increases. There are so many moving pieces right now that I think you would probably want to do maybe a two-year rate increase if you're looking at them, um, maybe annual for a couple of years until uh, the discussions at the regional water either play out or Des Moines, uh, kind of changes their cost of service, um, which should help the city of Johnston. Um, and then like Teresa mentioned on the sewer, I think there's the, the annexation improvements are a little bit, uh, more ironed out. I mean, two, two annex, you're going to have to do, you know, somewhere between 10 and $15 million of improvements to get sewer up there. But, you know, a lot of this cash flow is driven by what's happening at the WRA. And with Jo, with Grimes joining, which isn't baked into these numbers yet, with, uh, this biogas project, which should be a pretty good revenue stream for all members. Um, those are two things that should reduce your WRA burden. So, and then the other thing is if you notice in the assumptions up there, what the WRA flow growth says. So right now we've got for FY '22, we've got 8.8% built in there, which is kind of the, the highest number you've observed in the last 10 years. And then the long run average is really close to 4% that you guys are growing about 4% per year. Um, and so that, that changes your allocation of the WRA cost every year. Um, if you want to go down to the next slide. So the probably the, the biggest line to look at for you guys is if you look at line 48, this is, that's WRA debt service allocation. And so in fiscal 19, you ended up with like $365,000 of, of WRA debt allocation. But as those 8.8 and that 4% grows and as WRA brings on line 44, new debt, that's going to grow to, to a million. And so more than doubles in a five-year period, which, you know, the WRA has a pretty aggressive CIP over the next 10 years. And then it kind of drops off pretty substantially until they redo their facility plan. And so most of your pressure in your sewer is related to that line. And then if you bring on annexation debt, which is kind of what we've got kind of penciled out in 39 and 40, um, you know, that puts additional pressure on your rates. If you scroll down to the next page, and one thing I pointed out, um, to staff, um, you can see I highlighted the constraints there, but scroll down one more, Cindy. You know, this fund has, has got effectively too much cash in, in the fund. I mean, you're, you ended eight, and I know Teresa is going to kill me for saying this, but you ended, um, fiscal 19 with two and a half years' worth of operating expenses. And so, you know, one of the things that we will look to do when you do these annexations projects is, is borrow less and, and pay for some of that with cash and try to get that down between the 50 and 100%. Um, and so it, it'll be easy for you to do that, but it, it'll take pressure off your rates and kind of get this fund kind of back to where we, back to where we would suggest it to be. So I'll, I'll stop there and, um, happy to speak to questions or expand on something more.
Does anybody have questions for Teresa or Matt?
In the comparative information, Mayor, that I did send out earlier, or Matt sent out earlier today, it's our water rates that seem to have a lot of pressure and our sewer rates do not. So, um, I find that interesting, but, um, I guess that's just anecdotal information.
Yeah. Teresa, I don't mean to interrupt you, but somebody's having a conversation in the background. It's making it hard for us to hear.
Uh, Teresa, you just said, um, we get questions about water versus, you mean from citizens or what do you mean by that?
I, I, I just mean in general. I don't know.
I didn't know, I didn't, I didn't know if you were talking about like from, from the elected officials or who that was, what you were. Okay, okay. So then I got two.
I think what she was saying is that the, the water rates are on the higher end of the average and the sewer rates are on the lower end of the average when you do the comparables. I think that's what she was trying to say.
Yeah, that's all I meant.
And then, um, so on the water weight rate projections, where you've got the 1% into the future, isn't that really kind of, our water, water rate increases are kind of really driven by what Des Moines Water Works asks, seeks for an increase, charges us, right? So really, it'll be pretty hard for us to maintain that 1% in the future, correct?
I mean, I've got 5% built in there for their increase. Um, you know, and if you have a wet or a dry year, you have a lot of irrigation sales. You guys make up a lot of ground. Just because of the, the contribution margin from your irrigation. So I try to be conservative and I feel like that 1% is conservative until you, uh, identify some other big capital improvements that you're going to bring on.
So the 1% even allocates for the potential of a 5% rate increase by Des Moines Water Works? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, they did a 5% rate increase from them.
And then my last question is, so I think, was it line, you were talking about on the sewer, the cash, uh, on hand is a percent, is that, that line 79 that you were showing ahead, was that where you look at that number?
Uh, if you flip back to that sewer cash flow, Cindy, and go to, um, yeah, line 79, I like, I like that number to be 50% to 100%.
Or at least 100.
I like it to be 50 to 100%. And if you have a, a big capital project that you're kind of building up for, that's okay. Um, and sometimes, and this is becoming an issue with the WRA is, is the WRA debt is getting so big. You have to have a 110 coverage. And so that point one kicks off, you know, say your, your debt, WRA debt payment is a million dollars. That point one kicks off 100,000. If you don't have $100,000 of capital to pay for it, just builds your cash balance. There's a lot of WRA communities that are getting to that point. And I think at some point, everybody's going to start asking the WRA to borrow less and collect more from a CIP standpoint. But, but you guys have a lot of capital to spend that down. So, I mean, literally next spring, you could spend $2 million just on segment A.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
So basically with both of these cash flows, um, what I guess as staff I'm recommending is you already have the, the water rate increase in the ordinance. I say we move forward with that. The sewer rate. The sewer rate does not have an increase. I say we stay with that and we don't have one. And that we don't need to talk about the water and sewer cash flows again until next February.
Teresa, I think that sounds like a good plan. I was starting to ask a question of Matt when I realized I was on mute. So if I could real quickly. Just clarification, Matt, you made some comment, maybe I misunderstood you, but you said that we have been doing water rate increases on a four-year basis, and we should go to maybe a two-year or even a one-year basis? Did I hear you correctly?
Yeah, and so last, you know, last time you did a big rate ordinance, you adopted four years' worth of rate increases. And my fear would be that if you adopt four years this next time around, you might have to, you might put in place something that's a little bit too much. And I guess we can always go back and revisit those and drop them down. But there's a lot of moving pieces at the WRA, and there's a lot of moving pieces with the water and the metro. And so the longer, you know, the longer timeframe that we lock in, the more unknowns that we're trying to guess leading up to that. So, the city can do whatever it needs to do, and we'll look at them on an annual basis.
Sure, sure. So are you saying that if we did it on an annual basis or a two-year basis, we may go a couple of years without any increases?
No, I think like this fall, you would adopt, or not this fall, sorry, in the spring. Like if we followed Teresa's approach to look at them in February, you would look at what's the change for fiscal '22, which you would adopt on July 1, 2021. You know, and so you could just do that one year at that time, or you could do that year and the next year and adopt those two by ordinance, and then revisit it two years from then. Formally, last time we did four years, and I think that was a stretch.
And do you remember why we did that?
I think it's historically kind of how you had done it, and so we didn't change it. But, you know, for instance, on the water, I don't know if we would have done a full 5% this time around, you know. But since it's there, do we need to change it? No, we can just lower the future ones. But, you know, we might have done only a 4% or 3%, you know, as of July 1, 2020. And I feel like the longer you go out, the more conservative you have to be. And then, once they're in place, by default, they kind of stay there. Because it's more work to change them than it is to leave them.
I mean, the fact is, we do review these on an annual basis anyway. So we can, you know, we can always, even if we're frozen at a rate for four or five years, we can always make an adjustment downward. But I think your advice is good advice. Let's not, let's not set it so far out in the future. Let's continue to review on an annual basis and set the rates either on an annual or two-year basis. Other comments or questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
Thanks, Matt.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, we've got five minutes before our regular council meeting, which probably gives us about two minutes for something else so that we can all get off and jump back on. That's what we need to do, correct, Cindy?
That's correct.
Okay. Jim, did you want to say anything before we adjourn the work session?
I guess while we're here on the work session, there's one thing that I had on staff comments under the regular council meeting. Do you want me to go ahead and cover that issue, Mayor?
If you can do it in about two minutes.
I think I can.
Okay.
So what the issue is, is I gave the council sort of a breakdown of what it might look like or what our preference would be as far as doing an aquatic facility. And really, the aquatic facility came up in conversations once we announced publicly that Ignite was going to happen. We got a number of emails from residents, again, asking if the Ignite project was going to have an aquatic facility or a pool. And, you know, when is the city of Johnston going to have a pool and those kinds of things? And so, you know, as we talk with citizens about that process, one thing that a lot of people believe is, you know, deciding to do a pool is just a city council discussion. And you guys can go ahead and order or, you know, work on planning a pool. But really, it's more of a citizen-driven issue. And so actually, the citizens end up voting on whether we have a pool or not. It requires a referendum and you have to get 60% of approval. So what I wanted to really emphasize with this to the council is what we tell people as they contact us, is we tell them that, you know, I think what the council would like to see before you all consider whether you call for a referendum on an aquatic facility is that you'd like to see an organized group of citizens where you can see that there is people that are passionate about it, people that are willing to do a little bit of fundraising, people that are willing to reach out to other organizations and other people to try to drum up more and more interest in doing an aquatic facility. And so that's been sort of our response to folks. And I just wanted to make sure and at least have the council understand that because really, it's not really your decision on whether we build a pool, it's really the citizens' decision. And the more important part of it is if they need to get 60% of the community to support putting a pool in or an aquatic facility. So I just wanted to clarify that issue. I know particularly with new members of the council, and I know you guys see those emails that we get from folks about the aquatic facilities. So we just wanted to confirm or at least let you all know how we look at this and what we look for when people ask whether they want an aquatic facility for the city to do something with that. In this memo, I also provided information on the last, the two aquatic centers or votes that we had on aquatic center, and that's towards the last part of the memo. It's up on the screen now. So in 2005, that was the aquatic center that we voted with, with the city of Grimes. The plan was to build a facility, really just where currently would be just west of the current high school, right on the border of Johnston Grimes, actually on the Grimes side of the border. When we took that vote to the citizens in 2005, 58% voted yes and 42% voted no. So even though we had more than 50% of our residents, it requires 60%. And in that vote, we fell 13 votes short of the aquatic facility passing. And then so the council at that time decided to go ahead and do a referendum in 2006 because it was so close and, you know, they felt that, and plus, more than 50% of our citizens voted in favor of it. So they went back in 2006 for a referendum, and as you can see, had about twice as many people vote. And it did fail 54% against and 46% for. So, you know, that is 15 years ago. It's quite a while ago. But I just wanted to give that background because it does come up quite often, you know, what that facility was all about. And this was a partnership, it was more of a regional aquatic facility. Actually, the Grimes voters voted in support of it. It's the Johnston voters that voted against it in two different referendums. So again, I just wanted to share this information since every now and then we'll get people, when we've done our community surveys, people say, hey, why don't we have a pool? Sometimes when we do, you know, other activities, we get questions from citizens. So I wanted to just give the council some background on what we look for when people request to have a pool. It's not as simple as one citizen or a small group of citizens asking for that. I think we really need to see a large group of citizens that would have a lot of interest and drum up additional interest from citizens and organizations throughout the community. So anyway, that's what that was about, and it's just more of a report to the council, things to think about. It's not on our agenda to talk about, you know, whether we, you know, want to push for a pool right now. But at least if we get questions, we know what to tell citizens that ask those questions.
Thank you, Jim, for putting that information together. It's good information, good background, and also a good reminder of how we've been involved in this issue in the past. We have run out of time, but I would just encourage any of the council members, if they do have any questions and follow up to the memo, just to give Jim a call and have that conversation with him. So with that, we're going to adjourn the work session, and we'll see you all on the other side.